Can everybody make sure their microphones are on?
Hello.
Hello.
Jared, can you make sure that microphone's on? I don't think that's on.
I might have to share one, remember we got feedbacks. We do, you'll maybe have to share one down the line.
The feedback is...
Well, we may have to move six separate ones here. So we need to see if that's... With not doing it, I just want to... Y'all can have one of these if you need another one right now. What's on? Yeah, we can share.
Good afternoon. It is now five o'clock and we're going to start a public hearing for the town of Montegoal. We're going to start with a rough pile vote. Nate Wilson?
Here.
Alvin Powell?
Here.
Jessica Kamala?
Here.
Doran Farman?
Here.
Malin Robinson?
Here.
And now I'm going to turn the meeting over to our attorney Sam. To deal with the public hearing now.
This is a public hearing, members of the council, relative to an ordinance to amend ordinance 0521, amending the zoning map for the town of Montegoal, Tennessee to rezone a portion of parcel 002.07, Marion County Tax Map 022K, Group C from R3, High Density Residential District to C3 Interchange Commercial District. As the council may remember, we had a public hearing on this several weeks ago and we discovered that we had a technical defect in the ordinance that was before you and so, under Tennessee law, we felt it appropriate to come back and go through the process again. We're here to hear comments from the public. We're also here to hear any presentation that the applicant wants to make. We have Mr. Wilson, who is the town engineer relative to sewer matters, who's going to tell us a little bit on the sewer study and then, of course, we're prepared to hear from any member of the public who's interested. At the conclusion of this public hearing, then there's a special call meeting of the commission that will be held to have the second reading on this ordinance. So, Mr. Leonard, I see that you're back there. Is there anything that you or your client want to add to whatever you've said in the past relative to this project?
Without having first heard comment at this point, no, Sam, I don't believe so. I think we've pretty much said it all.
Okay, and then if some question is raised, y'all would prepare to respond to it, I reckon.
As best as possible.
Okay. Something I want to put in the record is that during some of the discussions back several weeks ago, there was some talk between the city and the landowner as far as possibly coming up with some additional conditions to be added to the site plan. I was consulted relative to that after those discussions and it was my legal advice that the document and the agreement could be considered to be contract zoning, which is not legal in Marion County, Tennessee. And so, if the... And I think Commissioner Wilson is the person who had that discussion. It was my advice that the town not proceed with this contract and to the best of my knowledge and the council members can correct me if I'm wrong, that the town is not proceeding based on the RBT Site Plan Agreed Addendum, which is the document I have from... Is that correct? You are not proceeding on that basis?
Yes.
All right. So, with that, let's go ahead and hear from Mr. Wilson as far as the sewer aspect of this project, to the degree that you have any information, Mr. Wilson.
So, just as a background, we installed flow monitors earlier this spring just to verify capacity within the system to evaluate INI and evaluate the pump stations and we're in the process of finalizing the report. I went through the data to the point where the results are clear. Just verbalize those in the report and finalize the actual presentation to the town. But based on the results, there are no capacity, immediate capacity issues within the basin that is connected to the property in question of the development. That flow, gravity flows to the pump station called the South Pump Station, which has capacity necessary to carry the current flow as well as any projected flows. There are INI issues that were observed throughout the system. Most of those were north of that area and so, we'll have just some, a little bit more details about where those are, but they're not, they're downstream of that pump station, basically.
For clarification, can you tell them what INI is?
INI is inflow or infiltration. So when it rains, extraneous flow should flow to the storm draining system, but instead, because of defects in the system, open manholes that could be cleaned out and caps that are off in private property owners' yards. It could be, it could be as a result of a service lateral from a house to the main line, not necessarily on the town, but it could be on a property owner. So, as far as where those defects are allowing water, rainwater to come into the sewer system was not part of the scope of our project and is yet to be determined. But the evaluation that we looked at from the flow monitoring results is that there is INI, most of that being downstream of the South Pump Station. The property in question is upstream of the pump station. So, there is INI in that system as well, but there's INI in every system that has a sewer system. So, if someone was to say that that's a significant issue, then every sewer system in America has INI. So, to the significance of capacity within the town of Montegoal concerning INI, most of that is downstream, a majority of the pump station. So, there's no significant issues upstream at that property.
Okay, thank you. The record of these proceedings, as many of you know, this has gone on several months now and so, the commission's heard comments on at least two other occasions. But if there is anyone who wants to come forward and speak for against this project, now's the time to do it. I've been asked to tell you, you're limited to three minutes, but if you have, if you've said a piece and you want to say it again, then you're free to do that. If you feel like you've said your piece and that's it, you're free to do that too. But now's the time for anyone else who wants to come forward and let the commission know what your feelings are relative to this project. Come to the dice, you've got three minutes.
I'll go first because I'm nervous.
Okay.
I always heard, "Go first," you know.
Imagine everybody's got their clothes off, isn't that what you're supposed to do?
Yeah. I don't know if that's a good idea. Okay, this is just a little snapshot of our community up and down the strip because I don't want us to get off on the fact that we're here because we need jobs. That's obviously off the table right now. My name is Mary Beth Best and I live at 521 Lautzenheiser Place, right here in Montegoal and this directly concerns me and I'm speaking for myself as a homeowner less than 200 feet from the proposed development. We know how this is going to go. You guys have been real clear about how you're going to vote. We know, we're here for the fourth time and you're going to try to get it right this time and you're going to try to vote it in and you're going to take away an established R3 zoning that was put in place in the eighties to protect us from exactly what you're getting ready to do. And that may be your legacy. But I want, just to be clear, this is all on the record, right? This will go on the transcripts, go on the minutes? Because I want it on the record that you are going to vote for the fourth time to rezone and take away this R3 buffer against the legal advice of Miller Martin Law Firm, against the expert opinion of structural engineers, also a resident in Montegoal, against extensive research done by the citizens of this community in a notebook that made you all so get your stomach. Sorry about that, but it was a very important piece of information. And the truth is, I wish you had done a notebook for us. I would have been really, really pleased to know that you did the same amount of research that we did. Number two, against the advice of the American Lung Association. Not just a bunch of disgruntled neighbors, but the American Lung Association wrote to you. And against that advice, you'll be voting to take away that R3 zoning. And finally, and most importantly, against the will of the people. We have nearly 300 people that were brave enough to put their name on a petition. There are many more that were scared to put their name on a petition. And that is the most disturbing part of this whole entire process. Against the will of the people and in favor of a developer, that you are going to take away an R3 zone buffer zone that was meant to be there. And that's very disappointing and I want that on the record, that that's what you're going to do for the fourth time. And just a reminder, this may be your legacy. Maybe you'll get it done, but there's another election coming up and the most powerful thing we hold is our vote. So, thank you.
My name is Deborah Reed. I'm not going to repeat everything that I said before because you've already heard it. But it's, to me, it's just a travesty, an absolute travesty, what's getting ready to happen. And, you know, I was just down the street a while ago, sitting there, watching all these trucks coming in and there's just, there must have been, I don't know, 20 trucks lined up down there. And I thought, "Oh, my gosh, you know, what's it going to be like down here at this corner?" You know, the traffic issues, the noise pollution, the air pollution, the environmental pollution. It's just staggering to me that we're actually here talking about this. It's just, it's just truly unbelievable. And I would, I'm going to say one more time, please, please think about the people.
My name is Oscar Fitzgerald. We have a cottage at the assembly. I've been coming up here since the 1950s. In the 1970s, my parents came up here, became citizens of Montegoal and they're buried over in the cemetery. We came up here because this was the entrance to the Cumberland Plateau, a beautiful place. Do you want this place to be known as the largest truck stop in the city, in the state? Is that what you want? People will come up here and they support the businesses and they come up here to retire and they come up here to buy houses and they come up here to enjoy this place. How are you going to enjoy it with 300 trucks? It's bad enough, you hear the trucks now coming up the mountain. You want to hear them 24 hours a day? And I had a question about the sewer. Have you figured out how much water they're going to flush into the sewer? I mean, just think of it, 300 trucks, that's at least 300 flushes. That's at least five gallons of flush. Have you figured that out? I mean, I'm just curious. Can you answer that question?
Yes, all that information will be in our final report. We've gotten all the information from the, excuse me, from the developer regarding what facility will be incorporated in the facility and so, all that was taken into account.
Well, you know, I think people are thinking that the truck stop is going to be a big plus for the city. I think the plus is all the people that are moving up here because it's such a great place. And I tell you, you put a truck stop in, people are going to be going the other way and all of that benefit that you think you had will go away and it'll be a big thing. And that's something you can think about when you're 20 years from now, when this place is a ghost town.
I'm fairly new to the mountain. My name is Sheila Holliston. We've had property up here for 21 years and paid taxes. And the reason I found the property 21 years ago was because I was trying to escape trucks on the interstate because we lived in Florida at the time. I plan to be a registered voter because we aren't registered yet, but my name is on that petition. We moved up here because it's so beautiful and so peaceful. We came from Florida, we're natives of Tennessee. We moved there 34 years ago. You guys have the most beautiful part of the country in your hands right now that you can keep that way. I beg of you to please reconsider this truck stop. It's, I live at 519 Lautzenheiser, right next to Billy and Mary Beth Best. And we hear trucks and bulldozers and everything as it is and we don't have 300 trucks yet. I have gone to the pilot station and sat there in the evenings and watched them, one after another, pull in, back out, move. And the noise and the waste that they produce, they come out of their trucks with jugs of urine. I'm sorry that I have to be so graphic, but they have trash and garbage. That's not going in the sewer system, that's going in the groundwater. That's affecting all the streams going down from this mountain, even the caverns, the things that people come here for. I felt blessed when I found this piece of property up here. We have looked forward for 20 years to live here. And two months after we get here, we find out we've got a truck stop 200 feet from our front door. Please reconsider this. I beg of you to please reconsider this. And that's, that's all I can say. Please put that in your notes. Thank you.
I'm Mary Clark. I have lived up here full-time for 20 years now. I've been coming here all of my childhood and our family's been here from the time of my great-great-grandmothers. I love the mountain. You all know how I feel about this truck stop going in. I want to be sure you understand that this isn't, this isn't personal against anyone here. And I really regret that it has been taken that way. I think, I really think you should be thankful that there are people here who care deeply about the character of the mountain and preserving it for the future. I regret, as Mary Beth said, that there are people here, business owners in town, a lot of people, who have talked to me and talked to many of us privately and said, "I'm afraid to say anything. I'm afraid for the council to find out." And part of that's because someone had posted, "I hope these people remember," you know, "that are against the truck stop." Next time, they want a favor from the council. And it shouldn't be about that and that's wrong. And that's really all I have to say. This is really about the character of Montegoal going forward. It's not anti-any development at all. There can be development that is sustaining and nurturing to a community. This won't be that.
I'm Joanne Atwood and I live directly across the street from the development on the corner of Sampley and Tressel. You guys inherited this issue. It didn't start with this administration and we all recognize that. The people that I've talked to on this panel and the Planning Commission before the election were all in favor of the truck stop. Every one of you that I've talked to before the election was in favor of the truck stop. From my perspective, it seems that regardless of the information that has been provided, the documentation, the concerns, this council just continues to push through what was decided before the election. You all were elected and the stance hasn't changed. That's so discouraging to me. You've been given a 500-page document with legitimate concerns and nobody has wavered in their opinion. And I wonder why. We bought our property 13 years ago. At the time, we bought that, we have an acre and a half. Our side yard was divided into by a ditch that comes across that is the runoff from the truck stop area through our property, through our neighbor's property and then through, right down the mountain. At that time, my husband wanted to fill that in so we could move. And we were asked by the city not to do that because it would disrupt the natural flow. We honored that request. We put a bridge over there. We didn't fill it in. But now, I'm thinking that with that truck stop, all of the oil and the urine and everything else that is coming off of that property is going to run right through our yard and I guarantee you, we will fill it in. Because it not only would get into our water system, but I'm not going to have that in our yard. So, I would just ask that you have the courage of your conviction to change your mind and look at this objectively, long-term development for this community. Development, as somebody else said, is a great thing and we want that. But the people with discretionary income are not going to come to Montegoal, Tennessee. If I were to do it again and we were moving here because we wanted a quality of life that was peaceful and serene and natural, I guarantee you, I wouldn't move here. I would not do it. So, please consider and vote. Vote your heart, vote what's right, not what you've decided before the election. Vote what you really think is in the best interest of the citizens because that's what you're charged to do. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Rodney Kilgore. I'm one of the developers of the property. I'm going to answer some of the questions I've heard here tonight. First off, we're talking about rezoning four something acres and the others being commercial for years. I mean, that can't stop the truck stop. If this was to get voted down tonight for three or four acres, that still ain't going to stop the truck stop. The trucks is here. This is going to be a travel center. It's going to have a Taco Bell, Bojangles, a grill, meat and tree. It just ain't going to be a truck stop. The trucks is already here. They're over at the Chinese place. They're right here behind Jassy's. They're already here. Good thing about all this situation is the wetlands, now everybody says wetlands. We went and put ponds in to show people it wasn't wetland. It's catching all the water now. The wetlands ain't even wet no more. So, that shouldn't even been wetland to start with. There ain't no water going towards them houses that's went there for years and decades. It's in them ponds up there. Y'all can drive by when you leave and look at the ponds. There going to be more ponds. Y'all should be happy that this is coming because of the ponds. If this accident, this chemical thing, would been over on this property and if it busted, it would be in them ponds. It wouldn't be running down the streets here. All that's going to be nice, neat, all going to be cleaned up, unbelievable place. It's just, I can't believe y'all thinking. About the pollution, y'all should have rode a bicycle here tonight. Or waltzed. I'm glad you did because your car is putting out more pollution than the trucks. The trucks run on DEF now. They go to California. There ain't no pollution. It ain't like it was 20 years ago. I've been in trucking, I do hazmat. I'm the guy that cleaned this up if y'all didn't know. I'm the guy that cleaned the hazmat deal up if nobody knew. I'm a hazmat person, I know all about that. And all these experts, I wish they was here tonight because I'm pretty sharp on that. Y'all lucky that that didn't get, y'all got ponds here to savings now. There are ponds up there. Anything went, goes bad, we're safe. We're, you know what I mean? It's going in, I won't catch it. It ain't running down the streets or nowhere else. The trucks is here, guys. We ain't building the truck stop to get trucks come. They're already here. They're everywhere, every night, on all ramps, everywhere.
Keep them on the road.
If we keep them on the road, you wouldn't have nothing. If they couldn't get fuel or nothing to eat, you wouldn't have nothing to eat. The trucks survived this world. I'm talking about COVID. They was working when we was home hid. They was out working. But they're already here, they're out there. We're just trying to manage them and put them in a place. This is more than a truck stop. It's going to have, bring a lot of money to this town. We need money for roads and everything. This town, the city, if I'm right, don't even pay city taxes. We don't.
Right.
We don't pay city taxes here. I've got a lot of property here. I'm buying 14 acres on Tressel Road. I got much of property here, nobody knows about it, is anybody in here? I grew up in a little town in Whittle, had nothing. They still ain't got nothing, never will have nothing because of the people in the town. People's moved out of that town, down to Jasper. That's where I moved. And up to Dunlap. If y'all know where Dunlap is, they're growing every day. So, I don't know what y'all want. Y'all getting something, come here. Business is shutting down and we're up here begging to open a business? This town should be here supporting it, so I was begging to bring a business to this town. There ain't no business, everybody's shutting down because ain't nobody wants to work. When we open, we're going to have to pay good money here, big money, for employees. I mean, we got Walmart down here paying 14, $15 an hour. Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Because I'm so scared of Sam's stopwatch, I had to type it up, time it.
No, if you go about, go over a few seconds, you'll be okay.
Okay, okay, I'll try, I'll try to be quick. And I just, before you start, I'd just like to say that with all due respect to all of you who serve and out of consideration for the innocent and the not-so-innocent, I have not mentioned anyone's names. And I've said this many times. This is an old hat for those of you who've been around since last summer. It seems that City of Montegoal officials have linked arms in support of a toxic, oversized truck stop within the heart of our small town, slipped in and wedged into an existing neighborhood of longtime homeowners and historic landmarks, next to parks and pathways, a library and a school. These players may vote again tonight to steal the remnants of an R3 buffer created to protect single-family homeowners from commercial development. An SETD authority assured me that no one there would ever recommend removing R3 between R1 and commercial. Yet, one of their agents hired to do the city's bidding has stretched the concept of interstate commercial corridor and driven it right into our neighbors' front yards. This group seems okay with letting Montegoal become more two-bit interstate exit than inviting mountain town at the hands of those who do not live here or who could care less about those who do. Will revenue gained in this way ever be worth the price we'll pay? If this council votes to steal more acres of protection from these neighbors, they will be voting to steal our health and safety, to increase Montegoal's traffic, air, noise, light and water pollution. It will be a vote to invite crime, drugs, human trafficking and prostitution. It will be a vote to invite crime, drugs, human trafficking, and prostitution. What will they take next in the name of revenue? The developers have bought and doubled down in the wrong place. For years, they have refused to honor the ordinances governing paving, fencing, and landscaping, and remain in violation of TDEX permit. Construction began months ago on your watch and continues without a building permit and with no enforcement. How do you expect this story to end when enforcement is not even handed? Each member of this large group, this posse, received a thick binder with months of research, reports, letters, maps, and photographs, gathered in one place, support for denying a truck stop in this location. One who seemed to speak for all said she had perused it ad nauseam. Why does key information, important to protecting Montego residents, make a city official feel sick? When no one else showed up to defend the developers' plan, their attorney, grasping, tried to discredit the expertise and findings of a professional engineer who cares deeply for Montego, his home. His credentials, along with his findings regarding the negative impacts of a truck stop in this location, are above reproach. His uncompensated contributions of time and energy were not made for his own benefit, but for the benefit of all of us who call Montego home. When those who serve choose to ignore the importance of protecting us, I think we need to ask why.
Well, I've been called out, and as a result, I don't think I have any choice but to speak. First of all, I do not question Mr. Waller's expertise in engineering. I've used him as an engineer in at least one lawsuit, okay? But that binder has information about pollution, about, uh, water pollution, nuisance, m- many things that Mr. Waller is not an expert at. I don't propose to be a doctor because I didn't go to medical school. I'm a lawyer. I went to law school. I cannot profess to have any other expertise but that which I have. Mr. Waller only has engineering experience. He is not a pollution expert, he is not a diesel mechanic expert, he is none of those things that were otherwise pointed out in that binder as him being an expert too. It's not true. Now, this mountain has always had trucks going over the top of it. This mountain has always, that, from the day that I first set foot on this mountain, has always had a truck stop, and there was a truck stop here even before I was on this mountain. There have always been truck stops here. Because the top of this mountain, every truck has got to go over to get where they are going, either going one direction or the other. So you're gonna have the noise to some extent, but it's not gonna be the same as it used to be because they have changed the way these operate, both with regard to the fuel and the sound, to a large extent. Now, you can't stop them going over the top of the mountain, and they're gonna have to fuel up somewhere. They are bringing products for homes, for families, for your safety, for everything you need in life. They do a service. Now, are there some that are not so great? That's true with every institution, it's true with every profession. There are good lawyers and there are bad lawyers, there are good doctors and bad doctors. There are people in every branch of everything that may not be so perfect. But overall, truckers serve a valuable purpose. Now, this isn't just for truckers. This is for families as well. Bottom line, if they stop to eat and they stop to buy gas, maybe they'll cruise through town and go to somebody's shop. Don't know. I didn't interrupt you guys. Are you gonna offer me the same kindness?
Continue.
Thank you. The bottom line is, folks, Mr. Kilgore was correct. Even if the four acres does not get rezoned, it's, this is not gonna stop this project. And the lawsuit that's been filed is not gonna stop this project, that I can guarantee you. The project is a project that I think will do some good for this town, and it will do some good for the area. I'm sorry you don't see it, but that's the bottom line. Thank you.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken who wants to speak? If you can say it in thirty seconds.
I can do it, I can do it. What Rusty just said, he assured us this is going to happen, whether or not that four-point acres and the other two, I think, that are designated wetlands, are rezoned or not, then why rezone it? You can at least, at this point, protect the neighbors more.
I, I wanna add one thing, briefly.
You're, you're so rebuttal, go ahead.
And, and I mentioned this to a local barber. If the local barber wanted to expand his barber shop, and he owned a piece of ground right next to it, and the city said, "No, you can't expand your, her local barber shop because we're gonna keep that an empty lot." He owns it. He has a right to do with it to a certain extent what he wants to do. You have a right to build a home on your property, it's residential property.
Not even close. Not even. If you wanna speak, if you wanna speak, come up and speak, but let's not, we're not gonna get in a shouting match here. Pardon me. Does anyone else who hasn't spoke wants to speak?
Billy Vast, live at five twenty-one Lotzenheiser Place. Um, as I understand it, we have a zoning attorney here that could probably tell that just because somebody purchased a piece of property with the correct zoning does not guarantee them the use of that property, does it, attorney?
I'm not here to give you legal opinions, sir.
Okay, well, it does not, you know, and that's arguable. Um, you know, the council has asked in the past to give them legal reasons that they could actually deny this, and you've been given reasons why, they've been ignored. Um, you know, it's, Joanne Miss Atwood brought up something earlier that I thought was, um, it's been an interesting fact for me, anyway. You know, before this group was even elected, I, not only have we been told this truck stop was a done deal, but we've been told who was gonna be appointed to the commission, who was gonna be appointed, who we're gonna be voted as alderman. And if particular aldermen were elected, they would be ran off as being alderman, and who exactly they were gonna replace them with. And everything that we've been told has happened to this point so far. I was even told in Tracy City back during the summer that, "I'll bet you this gets done." No, and here we go tonight, gonna get done. Ms. Clark brought up the fact, you know, that, um, if it doesn't matter whether or not this property is rezoned, then why rezone it? No, why not leave it the way it was? And I don't understand why we're arguing about four-point-two-five acres too, when that track was six-point-two-five acres. You know, if someone could explain that, that's another question we've had for almost a year now that nobody's answered. So, you know, there's been, um, a lot of questions with the previous administration, a lot of questions made to this administration, and we still feel like many of them have not been answered yet. I understand something that's, um, I, I find amazing, quite honestly, after attending many council meetings in other cities, that every vote that we've had on this truck stop has been voted on and approved unanimously. Like someone brought up tonight, no one's got a conscience, not, not one person disagrees with anything that's going on? You know, every vote that's been taken so far in the commission and this council has been voted on unanimously, not one person has voted in opposition. Yet, we've showed up here for over a year, and every single person that's come into this room has been in opposition to this truck stop, and there have been maybe one person that showed up that spoke in, in, that spoke for it. So I don't understand why this, you know, this big campaign out there by our local politicians that this is wanted and it's needed, that's not been the case with the people that I've talked to, that's not been the case in public perception and the people we've spoken with. Um, the only people that seem to want it are the ones that seem to have a vested interest in it. You guys politic on eating and get trails built, you politic on getting bridges built on your roads, water deals made with certain entities in this town, and I understand that you got promises that you need to keep. No, but not at the expense of our property, not at the expense of our peace. And I believe that you need to reconsider this, and there are other ramifications that can come from being it approved. And I guess if that's the case, that's what we'll have to do, we'll pursue those. Thank you.
Can I have thirty seconds, thirty seconds of my three minutes that I've been used?
I'm gonna have to start making notes. You can't, you can't, but we're not gonna do that anymore. You come on up and do it, but everybody's had their chance to speak, we're not gonna...
This is just something I, um, I keep hearing this, and I just don't get it, um, that there have always been truck stops here? Well, there hasn't always been two or three hundred truck stops here. I mean, truck.
Truck drivers.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken who wants to speak? Last call. Madam Mayor, you've had your public hearing on this matter. Uh, I guess you'll reconvene at six-thirty to have the special call meeting, correct?
Yes, do we have a motion to, uh? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, we will, uh, is it six, what time? Six-thirty is what time the, the special meeting will be. We'll adjourn till then.